Good evening. My name is Eric Lindstrom. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Inland Wetland Commission meeting for the town of Monroe. It is Wednesday, March 26th, and the time is 6:37 PM. Will everyone please stand to recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag. United States of America, in the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
I will take a roll call of members of the commission and staff present during tonight's hybrid meeting. Please answer here or present, starting with myself, Eric Lindstrom, Chairman. Ryan Kelly, Vice Chairman.
Here.
Rick Smith.
Here.
Jim Stewart is not here. Ben Sabia is not here. Paul Fernandez is not here. Mark Zamory.
Here.
Kathleen Gallagher, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Here.
And Andrew Brodmann, Inland Wetland Enforcement Officer.
Here.
Before we start, I'll read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. The objective and purpose of the Inland Wetland Commission is to provide for the overall protection and preservation of the inland wetlands and watercourses within the town of Monroe. Please note that this meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment and compliance with state law, Public Act 21-1. As such, this meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, you will automatically be muted and unable to unmute yourself. If you wish to speak during the public participation portion of the meeting, please use the raise hand function. If you are participating via telephone, press star nine to activate the raise hand feature. Staff will announce your name and unmute you when it is your turn to speak. The video feature has also been disabled for public participation. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title if applicable at the outset of each occasion such that each person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of this body or participating remotely shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. The chat features will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. In the normal course of our meetings, we will hear public hearings and other applications. The protocol for public hearings is to have an applicant make a presentation to the commission during which, after, and after which, the commission will be asking the applicant questions. I ask the applicants, keep their presentations as concise as possible. The commission will then review town, staff, and other independent comments. The meeting will then be open for public comment. I will ask that all comments be made to the chair or commission. After any and all comments pro, in opposition, or of a general nature are made, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. Please keep comments or questions direct, or a time limit of three minutes may be imposed. It is not necessary that the applicant respond, but generally in their best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions unless new material is entered in as evidence or testimony during their response. Please keep all comments pro and con specific to inland wetland-related matters. Other applications that do not involve a public hearing will follow a similar format, with the exception that there will be no public comments allowed. The meeting follows our published agenda unless otherwise amended. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to add IWV-24-03, which is 68 East Village Road. I'd like to add that to the enforcement portion of the agenda. It's IWV-2024-03.
All right. You want to do that first, or meeting on top of the list or bottom of that?
Put it on the bottom since we have somebody else here. So yeah, put it on the bottom of the list.
Good.
A motion for that?
Motion to add IWV-2024-03, 68 East Village Road, to the violation section of the agenda?
We have a motion to add by Commissioner Kelly. Do we have a second?
A second to motion.
Second by Commissioner Kelly, all favor? All right. Unanimous? Good?
Good.
Okay. At this time, we'd like to ask the, for general public participation, if there's anybody in chambers or online that would like to speak in a general nature. If it's anything about what's before us, we'll address that later.
No hands raised.
No hands raised. Okay. So moving on to regulated activities. IWC 2025-03, file number 1526, 2 Victoria Drive. Proposed construction of 10,000 square foot daycare and associated site improvements. Central LLC applicant Jay Edwards and Associate LLC representative.
Representatives are not here tonight. You have this, this application in your packets. It's staff's suggestion, since the entirety of this project is within an uplink review area, there are, there's grading within five feet of flagged wetlands, and the back corner of the building is within 20 feet of flagged wetlands. And there's discharge going into wetlands. Staff's suggestion is to have this as a public hearing.
And what does the reason for it, just for?
It would be for significant impact.
John?
Just friendly reminder that if you do vote to make it a public hearing due to significant impact, if there is a feasible or prudent alternative that exists, then you, if that this board makes a determination that exists, you have to deny the application. If you vote for it for public interest, then you have the availability to make the determination on whether it gets approved or does not get approved. But the vote of it being of a potential significant impact means if you believe by the end of this, there is a prudent and feasible alternative, then you have to deny it. Even if you think it's still reasonable for them to go forward with the plan that they have, the existence of one requires this board to deny it. So just always be really thoughtful if you actually vote for a public hearing because it's a potential significant impact.
Does the existence of the alternative mean that you have to choose the alternative?
Correct. This commission comes to the determination that there is a feasible and prudent alternative, which is a gray, which we had the discussion last time, and I think we'll maybe have it a little more at the next meeting. The existence of it, based on the termination of this board, means you have to deny it.
This is up against a lace soccer. Is that word?
It's across the street.
It's across the street.
It's on the other side.
I would also like to say that they did not have a pre-application meeting with staff. So this is the first time we are also seeing it, just so you know. I was told that it was in development, that they were looking to put a daycare facility here prior to the application, but I had never seen this set of plans, and neither did Andrew. So this is, just so you know, we have not given any comments to the applicant on this project.
And yet, they want us to make a determination, and they haven't even gotten suggestions and feedback, and so.
They're not required to have a pre-application.
No, I understand that, but it's usually in their best interest to be able to head off some of these concerns ahead of time before we get, we go down this path. Let me hear what you guys think. I know what I'm thinking, but. All right, we'll start now. We'll work this one.
Well, 4.47 acres out of 8.26 acres is wetland. Wetland, not upper review area.
Read me that number again. I'm sorry.
Fifty-four percent.
Okay.
Which is 4.47 divided by 8.25 acres. Wetland, not upper review area, as Thomas, sorry. As Andrew pointed out, it's totally, this building is totally in the upper review area. If you look at the elevation, it's, it's ripe for, if there's any kind of flood.
I don't want to get too deep.
In my mind, in my mind, it is, it is definitely significant wetlands. I'm not too worried about neighbors being close. I'm worried about the children in the daycare, and I just.
They are just to add on top to it, which, it overlaps a little bit with you guys, but it's also different sets of regulations, is they have to get a floodplain permit by the town's floodplain manager, which is so, because the entire, almost the entirety of the project is in a floodplain.
Right.
So, so there's also, when, so when we talk about flooding, like, that's not necessarily, you guys are, your scope is impacted wetlands. Yes, there's definitely overlap for the two of those, but they also independently, so you'll see on their plans, they have a basin that's not actually a stormwater basin, it's actually a surcharge area, because they cannot decrease the volume in the floodplain of what the capacity is for it to hold during a flood. So when you talk about flooding, it is in a floodplain, and they will have to meet the floodplain requirements.
I can continue with, 10,000 square foot building and a parking lot of 12,000 or more is, that's a half acre, and I just, I can't see that doing that in between, between wetlands, it just, it is, has a significant impact. No, no doubt in my.
Has a potential for significant impact. After all of the information is presented, you'll decide if it has a significant impact.
As Catherine said, potential. Oh.
Okay. Wait, last month has really pointed out that my eyes are going.
Yes, what, so, and then, you know, if you look at the calculation, you can't write another 41% is in the uplink review area, right? So in addition to the wetland.
Yeah, I mean, the upper reviewer is here. Whatever. It's relative.
We're not, we don't take objection to that. I just want to be clear on.
Right.
I am struggling myself, because it's not, I mean, I think that the community does care. We've seen a lot of involvement in applications recently, which is a good thing. It is more of a concern of the impact to the wetlands when I'm looking at this application, and I was trying to look at the alternative plans. I know we're not in the hearing yet, but I don't, we don't have to approve that either. We can deny the application, which I don't think we want to do. I don't think that we should make it a public hearing for the wrong reason.
You can also deny the application if you do, let's hypothetically say you vote on it for, because it has the potential for significant impact, you do find that there is the potential for a prudent, feasible alternative, you can also deny it without prejudice. They just, which means they can resubmit the application. But they have to go through the whole process all over again, take a feel over again.
Sure.
So if I'm interpreting what I think we're all saying is, this one isn't close enough to say, and we can get by with just public interest. I think this one is, it's got significant impact potential, and we need to follow the right way.
Understood.
So I think that is approved.
I motion, I motion to make this a, a public hearing due to significant impact to the wetlands.
Potential significant.
Significant to the wetlands.
And I think, would it be fair to say, if I read that correctly, without this right so that, are we counting that, or no?
Not yet.
Okay.
We're not, we're not making that determination.
If we were to deny the application, we would deny it without prejudice.
That's true.
All right. So if I got a motion, I didn't get a second.
I, I think, I think outright it should be not tonight. I don't, I don't, should we, should go forward?
Well, it's just the application. We still have to hear before we can deny.
Yeah, it's not time for the hearing. It's not time for that.
Yeah, we have to.
Hear what you want, but I, I don't stand.
We still have to hear. That's all.
Can I, can I ask a question about the FEMA line? What does that FEMA line mean?
That's your flood zone. Uh, yeah, the, the floodplain.
You're in the floodplain, so, and we can, if, and when we go into, we can ask the applicant to go into this, and maybe we can prep them to, to let them know that there's going to be some questions about it, and for them to explain it. So the, the stream that's in the back has an actual floodway. So a floodway is by FEMA's designation where there's like running water that's moving, it's a, it's a portion of it. Outside of the floodway is the floodplain, so that's an area that has a percentage of chance of flooding. We, people that regulate floodplains, care about the 100-year flood. So there is a zone attached with it, A, I think that's a zone A.
Yes.
I think it's a zone A, and then there's typically a floodplain attached to it, so your base flood elevation. Here, it's kind of varying, because you're actually along like a, a watercourse, like a river, which means, unlike parts of the ocean where, you know, entitled wetlands, it's a lot bigger, this one kind of variation, but it has a base flood elevation. So when you have to build a building, you have to build it above a base flood elevation. Some communities, there's local zoning, where like regulations say you have to build it a foot above the BFE, or two feet above the BFE, whatever that is. But that's basically the bottom level of your structure, and then there's regulations about what can be included below that. So along the shoreline, you'll see houses on stilts, you'll see houses with garages that have breakaway walls on it, because their BFE is like 11 feet above finish grade or eight feet above finish grade. We're not that extreme here, but they still have a base flood elevation they have to comply with.
This is the Paquannic River, right? Right here?
Yeah, so that's the floodway, and then there's a floodplain that goes into the land area. And I didn't do a full review of this. Andrew had done it. I had just like skimmed it, just to make sure that I was updated on what was going on in the department. But there's a floodplain that actually goes further into the site.
So the flood, the floodplain, it's pertinent to the conversation that we're going to have, but it is outside our purview, like, that's a planning and zoning.
But I do think it's important.
It's, it's important for the conversation.
It's important to understand how they're handling site features too, which is that basin, right where your finger's at.
Right.
Yeah, so that's what they're doing. So if you fill in the volume of a floodplain, the idea is, you can't fill in earth to reduce the volume of the area that can handle a flood when it occurs. So if you do fill in the earth, then you have to take it away somewhere else, so that total cubic volume evens out. And that's what they're doing as part of this plan.
The river is a 298 elevation in the.
It depends where the BFE, I don't think they have a BFE on here, but if you look at the FEMA maps, it outlines it better.
It still says 302 on the parking lot.
Again, that's just the elevation that they have, which is different than the BFE and what's required for the building. And again, I didn't.
Obviously, we have a lot of questions for the applicant, so.
Okay.
They're entitled to a hearing. We're going to just decide which, which kind of hearing we're going to give. So the motion on the table right now is motion for a public hearing based on significant impact.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
A second to motion?
We have a second. All in favor? All right. To you. Okay. This will go on our next meeting.
We have to notice for it, so it'll be a two meeting.
It'll be, right. Am I able to ask just a quick question before we move on? In terms of the procedural process, if we are not able to approve that, if there are feasible alternatives, is that essentially, does that make its way to them proactively so that they understand that they need to prepare more information on the feasible alternatives?
I think actually that's a comment in your memo, no?
One of the, one of the comments was that there was only one alternative presented, and it requires two.
Yes, he's, he already believed.
Another, another comment made to this was that there was no landscape plan associated with this.
Outlining mitigation.
So those should come before this public meeting opens.
But you can talk to them.
Yeah.
After you send the.
I mean, if this already impacts things in a way where the application, as it's been constructed, is.
Yeah.
Not able to be approved.
No, I think you can, well, it's not, you haven't made the determination if there's a prudent and feasible alternative, because again, prudent is a, prudent is a very subjective thought process. You can take economic factors into it, you can take other things. So you can just say that they, that you can let them know that they need to be very focused with prudent and feasible alternatives, and that it will be a discussion.
And that has already been addressed.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think related, if I could just, one more thing, right? Because we're going to bring it to the next meeting or another meeting. We're talking about wetlands. Like, I know you referenced the stilts and the breakaway walls and everything, but that's coastal maritime, right?
Yeah.
This is specifically in our purview, right? We've already determined that. Okay, good.
Yes.
All right. Moving on to IWC 2021-06R-A1, file number 1376, 64 Cambridge Ford Independence Drive. Proposed modification to reduce net fill quantity and modify the method of wetland restoration. Astro Land Holdings LLC and Spacey Land Holdings LLC applicant Mary Blackburn, solely engineering LLC representative.
Again, there's no, there's no representative here to present it. It's, we're, again, asking for either a public hearing or a regular hearing.
However, I will say that I spoke to the applicant, and they have no objection if this goes to a public hearing. They are very aware that they may submit for 64 Cambridge, and this is an amendment to the excavation and fill application. They did have a pre-construction meeting, a pre-conference meeting with staff about it. Basically, there's a very large portion area of the site that was originally planned to be filled, and it was part of the system that was putting the appropriate amount of water into the wetlands to restore the wetlands in that area. They don't want to bring in all that fill, they don't want to do that grading, and so they're proposing a well system, which is what they're basically doing now during the excavation and fill process. They want to just make it a permanent structure. I know James has some concerns over it, this was, you know, so I think they maybe addressed some of those during his application. He hasn't done his full review yet, but we have had some initial discussions with them about this, and at the end of the day, it's really a discretion of the commission. This was a public hearing the first time around. It does have potential significant, it does have, I would say, you know, it's of public interest at the very least, you know, to it, so it really should be a, a public hearing.
There was also an intervenor involved with the previous approved applications.
And we are notifying them appropriately.
Well, I think we probably all agree this should be public. Then the question is, based on what?
Can you read one on intervenor? I'm not sure I caught what that was.
Um, there's, there was an intervene, with the previous applications, there was an intervenor. An intervenor is somebody from the public that wants to be notified of everything that goes on with this, with the application.
And they have the ability to cross-examine, they have the ability to come up to me, it's a, it's a procedure. But they filed intervenor status for the original project, and so they'll keep them up to date for this.
Just looking at the surrounding properties, I see at least one that looks like it's a residence, maybe, family trust. There are obviously a lot of businesses surrounding and within 100 feet as well of the property. It had a lot of, and in the first application. So I, if anybody has, I can wait. You have stewarding these motions tonight.
Right. No, I, I think we all agree, it is going to be public. I don't think I can deny that. The question is, based on which factor, the public interest or the significant impact?
To me, I think public interest will be there. The intervenor is another factor. I mean, there, there's obviously public interest. There was previously, I'm sure there will continue to be.
So can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Writing this last sheet, there's a proposed, or possible, or potential development plan? Uh, why is this here? I'm not sure.
Potential development plan? Because what they're proposing is to build that, they don't necessarily have, no, go ahead.
It's an excavation and fill permit.
Yes.
So they're basically just padding out the site. As part of usually planning and zoning, they usually do like a schematic of what it might potentially be developed to in the future. We don't typically give excavation and fill permits without having some sort of idea of what you might want to develop it for, or sell it to develop it for. So that doesn't really have, that's no variant. That's not a proposed plan, that's not anything that just.
We will not be approving that, with that building or whatever.
But they usually try to show you how the site could be developed in the future.
Right. Okay, we have burnout pools, we have wetlands, we have upper reviewer, a very thin line in the middle, and they just put part of the warehouse. It's just, to me, I, I don't.
Yeah, it's not to be taken into your consideration. You're only looking at what's being proposed as part of the excavation and fill permit. You'll get a, you'll be able to see a full new application when it actually gets developed. And this commission did approve, you know, this project before. This is an amendment, this isn't a fresh, you know, application, so the understanding is, is there is a, you know.
So what would they have to do to, to put this development in? They'd have to come back to us?
Yes.
Yeah, a whole new application process, so.
I just don't understand why they gave this to us.
Again, it's an excavation and fill permit, so maybe they should have taken it out of your set of plans, but they have simultaneously submitted to both planning and zoning for the amendment and to inland wetlands. I would assume you would want the same thing that planning and zoning has, so I think they just made duplicates of it, instead of just taking out something for you not to be able to say.
Yeah. Well. Within the upper, they are working within the upper review area quite a lot on this plan, so, yeah, I think it's appropriate to public hearing for purposes of, Ryan, you say.
Interest, I think there's enough public interest, just because of the history of the application and the impacted parties and the within 100 feet.
Right, it's not, it's not crystal clear that, to me, I, I think that.
Make a motion?
Somebody make a motion to make this a public hearing based on motion interest.
I'll make that motion, to make this a public hearing based on public interest in the application.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Yeah, this is a second, it's not a half.
Gotcha, I got you, Rick, I got you. Got you.
We're quite sure. All right, all in favor? All right. Oh, thank you. Unanimous? All unanimous?
Got it.
Okay. Get to lug that around for weeks.
Yeah, sorry for the big, uh.
You get orders.
Sorry for the big packet this week.
You can get those bigger envelopes if.
Yeah.
Let's reuse that if we can.
We can, we can handle that, you can decide.
Okay, so we have regular meetings next, of which we have none. Public hearings, moving on to IWC 2025-01, file number 1518, 1314 Monroe Turnpike, proposed 13 lot, single-family residential cluster development with new road and drainage facilities. Birdseye Estates LLC applicant Jay Edwards Associates LLC representative, has been continued to April 9th. So, guess we're not going to talk about that.
Don't have to.
Oh.
The, the applicant's representative asked for this extra time to address some of our concerns with the last meeting.
Kind of said that in the last meeting, right?
What's that?
They kind of said in the last meeting, they weren't sure that that have.
They, they found some solutions to some of our concerns, and wanted some time to put that together. And we're supposed to have those new set of plans before the end of this week, so that we could still do our site walk for next week.
Right, okay.
Which, please, if you haven't answered me, answer me with those.
I, I still have to unfortunately turn that down.
No problem.
I will respond, I'll respond as well.
I'm familiar with the regulated activity timeline. What does this do for this? Because, because we kind of dragged this on, and then we said initially, hey, let's not, let's get on this, but they didn't show for the first meeting, when, with the first application, the initial application.
Timing, where are we on that?
Where are we?
Oh, we, uh, hmm. We have time on this.
Hey, well, I'm just, I'm just cognitive daylight, or time, you know, the timing is, is getting chewed up a bit. That's not necessarily a concern, because we are doing what we can to move this along.
But they can grant extensions.
Yeah, I actually, I don't have.
We're good. All right, let's move on.
After you open the public hearing, you have 35 days, but you have 65 days for them to extend anything along the line.
They do realize that their clock is ticking.
So, yeah, just check the time, and just, we'll make sure we know where we're at at the next meeting, and then if they need to write an extension, they'll have to write an extension. If you want to continue the public hearing after the next hearing, again, we have extensions, there's ways to, to coordinate this moving forward to remain statutorily in compliance.
All right, so moving on, skipping down to agent activities report, agent approvals.
Uh, there's, I issued an agent approval IA A25-1, file 1524. It's 30 Nelson Brook Road. It was the removal of 11 trees within the upland review area and possible wetland area. I issued the permit to remove five trees that were above 30-inch caliper and six trees that were below 30-inch caliper. And I did that due to public health, safety, and welfare. Some, some of these trees might be in wetlands. The house is 20 feet away from what is potential wetlands. But these trees are 60 to 70 feet tall, mostly tulip trees, and they were leaning toward the house. The area that is potentially wetlands is really more of a drainage swell. So upon going out and investigating it, it's really a drainage, it's really a swell. So it's not a healthy viable wetland. So I issued an approval to remove those trees because they were certainly a safety concern.
Are they leaving the stumps in place?
So conditions, I have four conditions of the approval. One was that they do not use heavy equipment to do the work. Two is to leave the stumps undisturbed. So cut them down, leave the stumps, do not dig them out. All debris to remove, to be removed from site. So I didn't want to leave wood chips in the area to deflect some of the drainage swell. And to install wetland markers along that line.
Wetland markers.
So, yeah, I went ahead and issued an agent approval on that. Moving on to enforcement. So moving on to enforcement. I have IWV-2025-03, file number 1523. It's 106 Longview Road. Removal of seven large trees and other vegetation within upland review area and possibly in wetlands. So upon a site inspection, I noticed seven trees were cut down and pushed into the woods. According to the GIS, it's in potential wetlands. I suspect that this area is upland woodland, but either way, it's going to be upland review area. I don't know exactly where those, where that line is. So the resident was directed to get his wetlands delineated. And based on the findings, he'll either need to do a remediation plan. And the question here is to do it either administratively or through the commission. It's seven large trees that were cut down without a permit and pushed into the woods. I could tell you that that area was previously disturbed. It was, it's all pachysandra, which is invasive anyway. He's looking to push his lawn up to the woods edge, which is why he cut down some of these trees. And I'll know more when I see his, his report, his soils report from the soil scientist, showing us exactly where those wetlands are. But he's certainly within the upland review area.
Right.
Regardless, so.
But are you comfortable keeping an eye on it and the whole situation? I mean.
Yes, I, I would do this, I would do this administratively with no concerns. And again, based on what I find, I would even allow him to push his lawn up, remove all the invasive pachysandra, and push his lawn up to that woods edge. And in doing that, I would ask him to, to do some plantings, not in kind for what was removed, but certainly to add some plantings to that area.
Right, okay. Do we need a motion to allow you to do it?
Yes.
Before, before we go on from that.
Go ahead.
My concern with the pachysandra.
Yep.
Is that they use an herbicide. If you're going to make them take it out, that they use an herbicide, I really don't, don't know that that's the appropriate. You can make that determination yourself, but I would ask them how they're going to, if they're going to remove that.
I could make that a condition of the approval, that they use an herbicide.
No, 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 no.
That they do not use an herbicide against.
I'm asking you to just take a look at it from that angle, that if, you know, sometimes it's better to, some of these invasive species, especially, especially pachysandra. I understand how it grows, but it stays. It's not like it's bad as some other things. So.
If you don't get it all, it will come back.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Part of the, part of the conditions of the approval I will give is to dig the pachysandra out by hand, put up silt fence, because now we're doing some pretty serious ground disturbance.
Right.
Pull it out mechanically. Use a machine, but, but do it mechanically and not use pesticides. And then to monitor it for two years. I can make that as part of the, part of the conditions of the approval.
Thank you. And of course, you know, we're relying on you to make the determination.
Okay, so with those conditions of approval, you'll be comfortable in doing it administratively?
If you're comfortable with it, then I'm comfortable with you.
Motion?
We need a motion to.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion to allow him to.
Do his thing.
His thing. We have a second to.
Process the application under the straight.
In a second.
What she said.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second. All in favor? Unanimous.
Let you move on.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on. IWV 2025-04, file 1525, is 155 Richards Drive. Removal of plus or minus 50 large trees and other vegetation within the upland review area, possibly wetlands, and possibly on Town of Monroe property. A site inspection revealed no less than 50 trees have been cut down, fell into what looks like healthy viable wetlands. A violation was issued. And one of the requirements was to have his wetlands delineated by a licensed wetland scientist and to have that property line surveyed to determine exactly the, the exact location of the property lines. It appears that some of those trees may be on town property, but it was too close for me to tell without having the property properly staked.
Why are they taking, what was that?
The, the property owner is here to explain to you why. But again, it was a, it was explained that it was a safety, a safety concern.
Can you do that? Can you tell me the red line is the property line or what is the red line?
Red line is what, the red line is a property line, yes. That's, that's the line. On the other side of that red line is where the trees were removed.
Yeah, I see the green, the green area goes all the way out here. And so they removed, they removed trees that were not on the property.
Well, I, I can't determine that without knowing exactly where that property line is, which is why I asked, have it surveyed? The best that I can tell, it looks like it's on the town property.
It's just a lot of open space.
But without going out there and measuring it, I, I don't know. And I, so that's why a surveyor was contacted in order to determine exactly where that property line is, to determine whether or not the violation is on town property or on the property owner's property.
But the limit of disturbance is.
Okay. So that line is representing, I asked, I asked the property owner to have the trees that were cut down quantified. How many trees, what size those trees were? So what I'd like is, is I extended 50 feet beyond what looks like the property line because that's where the trees that were cut down, that's where, that's where they're located.
So we still need to determine how many and on whose property?
That is correct.
We're kind of waiting to hear from that.
Yes, which he's already contacted a surveyor and a soil scientist, and he's in the works of doing that. I bring him to you again to find out whether this is going to be an administrative remediation or what force of action you'd like me to, to take. I'll also have, you know, that the property owner gave me the information on the tree company that cut down the trees. And I have a meeting with them tomorrow morning to inform them as to what, what the proper regulations are. Because they seem to not have any idea that they're not supposed to be cutting down trees that are near wetlands.
Is it premature for us to make that decision? Because if we don't have all the facts, it's kind of hard to say we should or shouldn't.
I think what you can do is manage just the applicant's, the property owner's expectation that they're going to have to come back in front of the planning, come back in front of the inland wetland commission to present the update.
Well, that's absolutely the case, yes. But I, I don't know if we can determine how we're going to handle it just yet until we have all the information.
I think staff assumed you would want to see this from start to finish.
I would assume that you would not want me to do this administratively, but I wanted to hear from you and have the applicant address it with you.
Before we give the applicant to some time.
Yep.
The fence that I see in certain of the, where is that fence?
Okay, so again, I'm not exactly sure, which is why the surveyor was also asked to locate that fence on the plan.
I found, I did my due diligence on the property because you can see it's a really good shape. And so when it was originally subdivided, it was a rectangle. And then at some point prior to the ownership by the current owner, it looks like they may have expanded their use into the Town of Monroe open space property, of which case there was a exchange of land that was given to them. And that's the weird kind of cutout you see on that, like one side. There was additional land that was given to them. It looks like an agreement was made. I don't know the whole history of it.
Given to them by the Town of Monroe?
Yeah, whoever.
Given back for open space?
I don't know if it was Town of Monroe open space at that time. All I can tell is, is what the like lot line adjustment was done on the property and the land that was transferred from one property to the other. On that lot line adjustment map, the fences at that time kind of showed and is partially on one property and partially on another property. So again, there's just too many questions about where the fences.
And that fence, and the fence that you were looking at was an older fence. This is a newer fence.
Well, we don't know if there's a fence back in kind, you know, we don't, we don't have any ideas though. New survey, new wetland.
We need all the, all the facts, figures in front of us. We'll work with you on this one. I don't think you should do this by yourself.
The yellow line, it goes right through a driveway on 149. You know what that is?
Uh, yeah, that's a question. Now, that's not part of the violation.
Right.
But it does, and, and the, the property owner has also brought that up.
Again, we're.
It's not part of the violation. So that is, that's a civil matter between the property owner and his neighbor.
Maybe in the future, we just request a little legend on the sheet so we don't have to ask all these questions like, like we're asking what's red, what's yellow, what's dashed, right? So I think that would be helpful in the future, but for now, it's fine. It's good to know that that's not part of the, what, the, right? And I think, are we saying that this top loop here closest to the street is the, the land that was given to the property, this, this area here?
Yeah, so yeah, so.
It would have been rectangle.
And then it's like.
Where it bumps out around that garage.
That has to be, that's a bit to go somewhere.
It was.
Yeah, that's what you're saying.
It's on the land records.
And we'll see it more clearly when the surveyor produce, produces his, his survey.
But the land records are just a bunch of lines. It doesn't like show it in proximity to today's features.
And the impacted area is what the green, the green dash area is.
Yes.
It's a portion on the residence property and it's a portion outside. Is that what you're saying?
Or is that the, or is the green what you had asked?
Sorry, hold on.
To put in the scope of work.
It looks like a portion of that green is maybe just grass.
It's a soil before and delineate wetland shown in green. So all, I think that's just showing where.
So that's where I was asking for the soil scientist to go ahead and take his soil samples from to see where the wetlands are.
Okay, I guess what I'm asking, right, if you look at the pictures of the tree.
Yep.
Where, where are they in this map?
The left, the left of the red line.
Inside the dotted line.
If that's not the residence property, why is the resident representing something that's not their property?
So do you want the Town of Monroe to come here and account for somebody else's actions?
Because it's, because it's the resident that created the violation.
So the resident is saying that they created the violation?
Yes. That's not in question.
Okay. Otherwise, yes, I would have.
You know, it may turn out, it may turn out that, it may turn out that all these trees are on his property. I just can't tell.
GIS is approximate, you know, so that's.
We need more information. But either way, we need more information and we need to work with you on this. We're not going to just.
I think, I think part of the question tonight is, is everybody okay with the green area, which is the scope of work that Andrew has designated as them to look for potential soils? And then obviously the property line. He didn't ask for him to go 100 feet from the property line or 150 feet of the property line. For some reason, let's hypothetically say they find no wetland soils within the 500 feet. I think we can still make the assumption that's in the upland review area. But if it's not in the wetlands, we just didn't want to send the wetland soil scientists on a wild goose chase, you know, and have them do this huge amount of area.
It's an appropriate place to start and let's see what information we get out of it.
And if they don't find it, if they don't find any wetlands in that area, then how do you determine whether the upper review?
I think you may, there's wetlands somewhere. I don't think that's going to be the situation. But.
Yeah, that's why I gave that 50-foot swath right there. Because you can see by being out there, you can see what happened at one point when this house was built. It was filled and then pretty much where that red line is, where that property line is, it drops off like two or three feet, probably two feet. Okay, so that was probably filled in wetlands at one point. But now all of what's just beyond that is very viable, very healthy, standing water in some spots. And that's really where most of the trees that were removed, that's where most of the most of the damage was done.
Okay.
Being that this is Town of Monroe open space, once we figure it out or.
Yep.
Town of Monroe, I, I definitely would be willing to do a site visit with you if you thought it helpful to us.
If you feel like it's helpful to you, then absolutely. Also, the, the property owner is going to need, and we're, we're looking into that. Property owner is going to need permission from the Town of Monroe to have soil scientist and the surveyor, I guess not the surveyor, but the soil scientist, to be within that 50 feet if it turns out that it is town property. So.
Can you give him that permission?
No. Uh, we've contacted the attorney. I think he must write up a whole harmless agreement and then figure out who needs to sign for.
I did ask the applicant to be here tonight, thought you'd have questions for him, but if you feel like it's just.
I think it's just premature. We'd need to have something to look at. I think that has specific details on it before we ask more questions.
Do we have any idea of timeline?
So I did get the soil.
Hold on, uh, do you stand up, state your name?
Right here?
Yep.
Yeah. Amal of the Ramon.
Your address, please.
155 Richards Drive.
Okay.
This was the soil tested today by this soil scientist.
Have you?
I have not seen it yet.
I just, and I spoke to him earlier, saying he will write the official report. And this is some of the pictures, the trees were.
Let, he can just submit it and then we could take a look at that, you know, in our next meetings. We have all that information.
Okay, I'll invite the mic here.
Great.
Yeah. Yeah, found this out this afternoon, so. And based on this, yeah, we're certainly within upland review area. And yeah, I'm going to say some of those trees are, again, no, I'm going to say some of those trees are actually in wetlands based on what I'm seeing here. I'll know better when the property line gets drawn in there. But yeah, I'm going to say some of those trees are in wetlands.
Right.
All right, so let's get some of the. Alright, so let's get some of the drawings and.
Uh, timeline on the surveyor?
Probably next week.
Okay.
Who are you using?
Hi, Edward Associates.
Okay.
Jason.
Okay. Alright, so we'll see you at the next meeting.
Yep.
I do want to make sure that I do have time. We do, we do have enough time if we decide that the site visit is appropriate, that we can do that. So.
I'll set up a site.
Want to give us?
Anybody else?
That or not, but, uh, giving us permission at this point would be helpful, but.
I'll, I'll work on that. I'll make the arrangements for it. Anybody else? Okay. Um, and I'll just state on record that I apologize for having you come in and.
I think it was helpful for him to actually hear.
He brought some relevant information, so that's good.
Also appreciate the fact that you're working with staff to get this sort of help.
Right. Yeah. Thanks for coming in. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Like I said, I did have the, uh, the trees, the tree companies coming in tomorrow for, for me to explain to them what wetland regulations mean for tree removals.
Would, would you say, Andrew, just I test, were the trees a danger to the, to the house?
Not to the house. Uh, his concern was to the fence that he put up.
And he, and he has small children, so if they're running around the yard.
And that was, and yes, yes, his yard, yes, yes. But they, they were large trees.
Time for him to some degree.
Let's, to see what. No, I think the question was related to, is it, is it a danger?
Was, was there a risk?
What we're hearing is that it's potentially a danger to his yard.
It was potentially a danger to his yard. It's a wet area, which you know, tree roots are sensitive in wetter areas. They were very large trees, as you could see from the pictures. And as I stated to the resident, um, had he come here for a permit to do this based on public health, safety and welfare, we would have more than likely issued him a permit to remove these trees. But we would have, you know, we would have made sure, we would have made sure that the trees weren't just felled and, you know, falling and, and crushing the other vegetation that was in there. So we would have guided him along in the proper way to take care of these.
And that just opens the door to anyone who wants to take trees down in a wetland area. Oh, I'm afraid it's going to fall. You know, I, I, I'm sorry, trees fall. I have, I've got trees on my property. They fall. I keep my dog away from them, you know? Let's see.
Okay.
Alright.
So we don't need any motion here. Uh, we'll just wait for more information.
Uh, I do have a question before we jump into the 60 eighties village, just.
Yep.
We have this 30 Pepperidge violation still kind of hanging out there. Any update? Am I jumping a gun asking about this?
Uh, you're not jumping a gun. Um, she did reach out to, and she's, she's keeping me informed of all of the rejections that she's getting. Not rejections, but I'm too busy to take on this project. So she, she reached out to a landscape architect, uh, out of Newtown. She reached out to, uh, was it Matthew Popp? She's reached out to a couple of people that just said that they were very, and, and I see the emails now. I also see that, um, but we're talking about a whole remediation plan. I was going to say the resident that was just here, he was able to get somebody pretty lickety split. But she's looking for, what she needs is a remediation plan. So that's a whole plan. I don't have a timeframe for you. And I, you know, I don't know what to do about it other than she's, she's being very proactive by showing me, hey, I got this email the other day and they can't take on this project. And I can't refer anybody to her.
Right.
Although I suspect if I did, we would get somebody. I suspect I, 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 I don't know that for sure.
You can't provide a list of, hey, we, these people come into our chambers.
No, ethically.
You can't get recommendations.
It's not a recommendation, is it? These are.
It would have to be an extremely exhaustive list of every single person we have ever seen in the last however many years.
I would tell you this much, I am not uncomfortable coming up with a plan. A remediation plan. I would have them, I would have them pull out all of the, um, all of the, the driveway material that was brought in, bring it down to virgin soil. And I would come up with a planting plan that would bring it back to active viable wetlands.
Is this the? So the resident's name again?
Uh, the resident's name was.
Campos?
Camp, Campanella? Oh, Campos, Campos.
That's her Campos.
Yep, yep.
This is behind Stop It Shop, right?
Uh, yes, yeah, through the woods.
Went to see the.
Yep, yep. Yeah, I mean, that's the only way I could see this moving along quicker.
Well, let me ask you, are, are you confident in coming up with a quality remediation plan to manage this?
I am, I am. But you know, you gotta, you gotta be consider, like, this is taking staff time, which I don't mind doing. But it's really the resident's responsibility.
Right, but at the same time, it, it sounds like, I think the last time you said they weren't able to maybe get somebody until like.
September. September is what they were told.
I mean, it'll be a year basically if this, nothing has happened. And meanwhile, it's just sitting there. So. I mean, how long will it take you to put together some sort of a plan for?
Depends on how detailed you want it.
You tell me.
Um, I could put together a, a pretty comprehensive plan. Uh, take me a day to do it.
That's, I think, I don't know, I, I thought it was like a bio.
It was significant. So take me a day to do it.
Is there?
It's also a day of eight hours.
Yeah.
Of time.
I don't know. Is that something, is, is there a way we can, as a town, charge for that?
You're in a unique situation because he has a level of expertise that we don't normally have from an.
I understand.
Personal officer or that's required to be in the position. So you just happen to be getting someone that has us an extensive love for the landscape background as, you know, he has. Um, but no, like he can't, we can't charge for his services.
We can't, we can't charge for the services because that's sort of a conflict.
Independently, you know, act as a consultant to them.
What if it's pro bono?
Also the reviewer, you know, as well.
Uh, yeah.
You know, he's, you can't, yeah, you can't review, just like in the same way you as a commissioner can't represent, you know, somebody else from the town, you know, as a consultant, you know, if you were an engineer or, you know, or something of the sort. That's very, very clear in the case law as a conflict of interest.
My thought is that if we allow him to do that and they say that's too much, you know, allowing it to go to another, a third party.
Yeah, I'm with. There's a bit of a conflict there.
Yeah, I, 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 you know, I, I wouldn't want to do it because I would say, you know, this is, you know, you took down this tree. You know, I, I might go more than, and I don't know that you're there, but I'm just saying from a viewpoint of us.
Right. There's, there's risk because what if you ask something that is beyond reasonable? Do they then attack the town and say, well, they made me do it and I didn't have to do it and that's an issue.
They could have.
So.
Can I, can I ask, you said that they've been reaching out to people, people are saying they don't have time. September is a timeline that's been thrown out there. The wetlands are obviously impacted. You know, I've been on the property. They're, they're impacted. Are they worse off tomorrow than they were last month?
So the answer is no, the site is stabilized.
So then perhaps what we need to do is tell them like, stop falling, get a plan from somebody, you know, whatever. Get the time, the timeline in place, share the timeline with us and then hold them accountable to that. As much as I don't want for a violation to remain open for that long, it's not. If, if the impact is not being, uh.
Can we at least get them to clean out what's there? Not necessarily remediate, but at least clean it up.
Um, so the answer, the answer is yes, I'm a little concerned that in cleaning up, they're going to be creating more disturbance. I'd rather the disturbance be part of the remediation, if that makes sense, because I think.
I'm just.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Make some progress and, you know.
I understand. Thank you.
Feels like, not that they're not doing anything, but obviously nothing's happening through no fault of their own necessarily.
Through no fault of their own, but you're right. I mean, it is lingering here without action.
You know.
Yep.
When did we go there? Was that in like June or July or was it later than that?
It was later than that. It was later than that.
September.
It was short sleeve weather. Yeah, September.
But it wasn't, it, it was a long time ago and there's been no progress.
That was Yankee fan back then.
Was his, was his Yankee shirt short sleeve or what?
It's a long story.
So you're right, there has been no action on it other than.
What concerns me is this was a violation, what, like 15 years ago?
Yes.
That sort of got.
Yes.
Really? And like, I'm just wondering if they're slow walking it to hope it goes away for another 15 years.
Okay, so I would, I would say that that's not accurate only by the amount of emails that she sends to me. I'm not chasing her. I'm not chasing the, the property owner saying, hey, where are we at? Where are we at? She's calling me and saying, hey, I just got another email from this landscape architect that said that they don't even want to take on the project. Then, so that's what we're dealing with.
Would it be a conflict of interest if on behalf of the resident at the town of Monroe, you call them to explain that this needs to be accelerated? Maybe that might help to, to escalate it a little bit.
I, I, I kind of do that. I, I kind of do that anyway.
But you talk to the, the folks that she's calling?
Oh, no, 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 no. Um, I'm sorry.
You were saying.
Misunderstanding.
Yeah.
Call the engineer and see if I have any.
Been out there for a while. I don't know if I like that.
Yeah, I don't know.
Things kind of too intrusive.
Yeah. Yeah, because then they're getting preferential treatment because of my position.
Has nothing to do with its decision though, right? Yeah, okay, I guess, I guess it's probably, yeah.
I mean, all we can do is keep setting, oh, time limit. I mean.
Yeah, I did tell her by July, something needs to happen.
Right.
But it's out of her control, so I, I, I don't know what to do beyond that.
I, I don't feel comfortable with that because that's a timeline without any.
Without.
Ramifications, right? So what do we do? Just extend the timeline again after July?
Right. At some point, we got to start penalizing these people and if it has to be monetary, okay, well then it's going to be monetary.
I thought that was, I, and I think I was here for that meeting. I, but I thought that was the agreement, July, and then if it wasn't remediated, citation.
That is correct.
Issue which has fines associated with it.
But that's.
Is she reminded of that though? You didn't refer this to her, right?
I believe I did, but I will reiterate it again tomorrow.
Yeah, because we want to be open and, and as fair as we can, but you know, a year is.
Based on other people being able to get, you know, it's just kind of.
Like I said, like I said, uh, this was a different situation where they're just looking for the wetlands to be delineated and the property line to be surveyed. This is putting together a whole remediation plan. So it is, it is different.
Have they gotten it delineated?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. They got both properties delineated and they got their property line surveyed. Yeah, 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 yeah. That part got taken care of pretty quickly, actually.
So they have made some progress.
They have, they've made some progress. I mean, they, you know, they, uh, they reached out to 197 Cross Hill and the lawyers got together and that took time, which is why all of this is lingering. There's, there's, the, the process is just taking a long time. But they had to first get permission for the soil scientist to be on the property of 197. The owner of 197 was away, so that took three weeks for him to even get back to the resident. And she had left, she had left two messages for, for 197. She, she even got in trouble for going on the proper, knocked on the front door of 197 Cross Hill. She found out from the field card where the homeowner lived and she went up there, knocked on the door to say, hey, I'm sorry. This violation is coming to you because of us. And, uh, the 197 was not pleased that somebody was knocking on their door. So like I said, my, my point is, my point is that she's being very proactive. It's just, it's, it's out of her control.
Reminder.
That we are looking for something.
Hard to, I understand everything that we're all saying. It's hard to penalize a resident that's acknowledged that they've done something wrong. They're trying to resolve it and they are trying to control the timeline to the best of their ability.
Yeah.
Right, but we can't set a precedent that if you show good effort, it can go on forever. Like at some point this has got to end.
Yeah.
So, so.
You know, I, I have mocked up a, uh, a remediation plan that does not take all day. I, I mocked up a remediation plan. If you'd like to take, if you'd like to take a look at it.
I think you might want to be careful about recommending that, uh, right now, right? Because, um, but anyways, um, going back to, I think Mr. Chairman, uh, Lentstrom maybe had said this is that. So, or maybe you said that they told her they can't do it right now. Typically a follow-up statement to that would be, okay, can you give me a target timeline? Because once they do.
But they have.
Which is what?
September. September.
Of this year.
Of this year.
Okay. So, you know, do we extend it from July to September and say, listen, after this?
That's what we're talking about. That's.
Extend it now instead of in July. Perhaps that is a little bit different than like the deadline coming and us not.
I would say you leave the deadline at July and, right, because if we wait until September, nobody wants to wait until September. If we wait until September to see a plan, we've lost the planting season. They're not planting. They're not, they're not taking care of this remediation until.
A year.
Spring.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, so we'd like to see the remediation done in the fall would be a great time for planting, a great time to do this remediation plan.
Fair points. Yes, okay.
So.
That, which is why you mentioned July.
Right.
I say we keep the, keep the pressure on. Hopefully she can find somebody by July.
I will reiterate to her, your, uh, your, your need to have some speedy action.
Right.
And, and is there any ramifications of, um, okay, if you don't, then you are going to be subject to our remediation plan and you will be able, I mean, you know, I mean, is there anything, you know, that, that?
Yeah, I think, I think by, I think by emphasizing that the citations will begin, I, I think that's as much pressure as, as you can do.
Right. I mean, the money, the money, the, the, the fine or whatever remediation, you know, it doesn't have to be much. I mean, you know, if, if, if we.
It's intended to.
Yeah, if we start saying, okay, it's, you know, for the first 30 days, it's a dollar a day.
Well, it's a hundred and fifty, it's a hundred and fifty, it's a hundred and fifty dollars a day. And then I, for the first 30 days, and I think then it's up to our discretion, I'd have to, I'd have to look into it, but.
That would be very different than donating, so we're looking.
Yeah, let's look into that. Also, we have a understanding before we get too close to that.
Okay.
Okay. And that kind of dovetails into our next topic, which is 60 eighties village.
Okay, so yeah, 60 eighties village. Nobody online. All right. So we all remember 60 eighties village, IWV 2024 dash oh three, uh, file number 1595, it, or 1495. It's 60 eighties Village Road. Uh, it was the curb cut. It was the violation in there. Uh, so there are two things with this. Um, one, we made a deadline for, for the applicant. The property owner, he's not really an applicant, the property owner. Uh, we gave him a deadline of July 9th to submit a plan and an application. Um, or we start moving into citations.
Right.
Um, we need to bump that deadline up to July 23rd or sooner because we, at the time, we said July 9th on record. There is no meeting on July 9th. So I just want to clarify that for the record. We could either move it to.
Well, in that discussion, in listening to the, uh, Well, in that discussion, in listening to the, uh, to the property owner, we took into consideration some of the details that he was providing to us on good faith, and it doesn't sound like those were accurate.
So that's my second issue with this, which is why I'm bringing it to you, is that, uh, Mr. Cuzio, the property owner, stated at the last meeting that the house is no longer listed for sale. Um, it actually still is listed for sale.
Yeah.
Um, even, even as of today, it's listed for sale? So that's why we asked, we asked him to come back to the commission and he was supposed to be here tonight.
Yeah, that's not right. Right, yeah, because he presented that, you know, no, was, he changed his mind, he was going to stay, he wasn't planning on moving. No, the listing was removed and come to find out that wasn't the case. That's just. So. No, I, that's, it feels very deceptive. Try to help people, but you have to be open and honest with them, that's disappointing. Right, so, um, I, I kind of think we have to step back from our decision to give him a few months to say, that's off the table based on inaccurate information provided us, and I think we got to readdress this whole situation. So I was kind of hoping we could do that tonight.
Yeah.
If not here.
So was I, um, and I see he's not online, uh, he said he was going to try to make it here, if not, he would be online.
Right.
Um. Staff's recommendation to this, I mean, I don't know, uh, staff's recommendation would be to clear the violation.
Right, because he, he actually said that last time, he goes, do you guys want me to just clear the violation? And we kind of paused and said, well, maybe we could still get this all to work out. And he says, yeah, I don't plan on going anywhere because I want to, I, I'm, I'm not going to sell my house now, I was thinking about it, but I'm not, and I'm going to stay, I'm not going. So, I, I, because that's what I was suggesting, let's, let's, let's get rid of the violation. If he wants to apply for a building permit to put up a shed or barn or whatever, do it separate, but let's address the violation and get it, get it cleared, even if it means some double work and maybe you're redoing what you're already going to be doing to fix the violation, but you know, again, this has been going on for quite some time.
I agree. I agree with that.
Absolutely.
I'm just curious, did he come in to, to ask staff about the process of submitting an application, like, he was all about how that's his next step, he's going to start doing it immediately.
Uh, right, because we, we got a, we got kind of a basic drawing here that didn't have the level of detail that we were looking for and it was kind of just a general concept plan and.
He has not reached out for further guidance, but I don't think he needed to, I think he had all the information when he left at the last meeting, what he needed to do in order to put together a plan. So that was going to be an IWC application for installing the driveway, the building, and that would also address the violation, the remediation of the violation. So he was clear as to what he needed to do. Um, and I believe he's going through with that at this point.
Right, but again, we gave him that green light based on.
On, yes.
Information that now is not accurate, we'll leave it at that.
Right, okay. Um, so I can draft up a letter, uh, send him out a letter saying that the, the violation needs to be remediated.
Right.
Um.
We have to put a date and time on that.
And we will put it.
By this date and time.
Yeah.
And we should determine right now when that needs to be. What is, what's specific?
Um, before we could determine that, are we, are we looking for an administrative remediation? Um. It's, the, the violation is ten feet of driveway material, ten or fifteen feet of driveway material.
Right.
Brought into, uh, upland review area.
Right.
Uh, by twenty-five or thirty feet wide.
Right.
So that material needs to be removed, the soil needs to be stabilized, uh, silt fence needs to go up. Um, that would be the remediation, that would be, that would be remediating the violation.
Right.
So. Very specific in the communication to him about all of those steps, so, just so he doesn't pull the gravel and call it a day.
Yeah, uh, that would, that would be part, that would be part of his approval, yeah, the conditions of his approval.
Again, to the, to the date, and then if the date is not met, is there a violation? How does that work? Then there would be citation.
Uh, then it would go to a citation, if he had a deadline for remediating this and he didn't meet that deadline, then we could look into citation.
So I guess the first question, we want to let you handle this whole thing.
Correct.
Okay, I'm comfortable that, that's up to you guys if you want to.
Yeah, I don't think it's major, I think, not, not personal, but I think that you can handle it, definitely.
And give me, and give me the timeframe that you want.
I would say June first.
I want to be aggressive about, I don't, you know, I want there to be a very limited runway, I don't.
So we're, we're at the beginning of April now.
Right, so it's two months to deal with this.
By the end of June?
I said.
The June first.
You want us to say June first, this needs to be remediated.
About this for a year, you guys.
June first, no, I agree.
Has it been a year?
Yes, the original complaint came into play last year.
I'd like June first, I would go for July first.
It was the same remediation in October, I'm sorry, but we talked about the same. Exactly, he, right, exactly, so.
And the, and he's still able, and he's still able to submit his application and his.
Independent, that's fine, but there's no prejudice, we're not saying you can't do that, it's just, get this fixed.
Okay.
And the application is doing us no favors, we're just to try to help him get the word out that we want it to get.
Okay, I'm clear, I'm clear on it.
So, do we need?
Do we need a motion on this?
Yes, please.
What is the motion?
Uh, to allow Andrew to process the violation administratively.
To do his thing.
We need a motion to allow Andrew to process the violation administratively.
I make the motion to allow staff, allow Andrew to process the violation administratively.
Second.
We have a second. Do one of them. Either you, either one or you two.
Just, I do the last one. Okay, I'll do this one, I guess.
Yeah, I, I second that.
Is that a half or a full?
No, it's a full.
Okay. Second.
No, I'm sorry. Unanimous?
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, okay.
You know, if we ever get sued, we have to write a transcript and the sarcasm of do your thing doesn't always show up in transcripts.
This is.
We're going to have to go to the videotape.
You know, we're volunteers, you got to let us smile once in a while.
Going to have to get a special LLM to translate this for the AI component. Okay, so moving on to, all the way down to minutes, we probably can't do minutes because we don't have to read into the minutes, so why don't we?
Our secretary is out.
Yeah, so why don't we, uh, postpone that till our next meeting?
You don't need a motion for that, right?
No.
Okay, and then public outreach, maybe we should wait till all the members are here to go through all that as well.
Yes.
Brings us to the end of the agenda. Need a motion to adjourn? Unless there's anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
To adjourn?
Second, second, second.
You have a second. All in favor?
Oh, sorry.
Aye.